Good morning. Can you hear us in the audience? Just a thumbs up if you can. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Good morning. Let's, uh, let's have the special meeting of the Emergency Preparedness Committee come to order. It's eight oh two. And we'll do all calls. Dale, Lynn, Craig.
Here.
Mary Ann, not here. I think she sent me a note that she wouldn't be. Chris, I'm here. Ray is absent. Told me he would be. Jerry, Jerry's in the parking lot. We'll count that as a yes. Vic, Bud, and Randy. Excellent. All right. All present except for Jerry who's semi-pilled. All right. Oral communications for items not on the agenda. I'm pretty well focused today. Right? I did attach the minutes of both the December fifth meeting and the January ninth meeting. Better have a chance to review them sufficiently to approve them.
Absolutely.
I did review the minutes and I sent to Chris, I think, maybe, and maybe Craig. Um, just a small correction in the minutes for something that was stated by the, by myself, which I did not state, just needed to be corrected in the minutes.
I ha- I have those, I have that correction in my email. So that was on the December fifth meeting notes. Okay. Yep. All right. So then any other, any other comments on those? I guess the correct order is to have a, get a motion to approve them that we discussed. So.
Yeah, yeah, this is to.
Both?
Approve with correction for the fire marshal.
With the amendment as submitted by the fire marshal. Agreed. Okay. Any other discussion about those minutes? All right. So I guess all in favor? Aye. Do we have any? You, yep, you're gonna abstain on, yeah, I guess we have one moment to abstain. You're also gonna abstain? All right. So any nays? That we have two abstentions, otherwise all ayes.
I interrupt this broadcast to inform the university on the child of God being of light and that I.
Hello? We hear audio from a member in the audience? Okay, thank you. All right. Um, number five, the point of today's meeting is the continued discussion of the priorities and preparation for a presentation to the town council. I'm going, I want to read an email to the group that I got from the, from the town. It was addressed to Brown Act committee chairs. Town council has requested for every Brown Act committee chair to attend a town council meeting and review the current focus of your committee with a presentation. The presentation should be five to 10 minutes in length. The presentations are planned to be split between January 22nd, February 12th, and March 12th. Please let us know which date you would prefer. The exact presentation time will be shared closer to each meeting. We are currently in the number one slot, the January 22 meeting. But I think if we want to maintain that, one of the focuses of today's meeting has to be to come out with a, it's a pretty strong outline of a presentation. I could imagine we'd have a subcommittee that could work it for the next few days, but the 22nd is Wednesday, Monday the 20th is a holiday. So we have a few days. Review the current focus of your committee with a presentation.
Is this with respect to the overall, excuse me, a focus of the committee with respect to this subject matter that we're about to discuss? Or are they talking about focus of the committee in a larger sense? I'm a little bit confused by that.
Focus of the committee overall.
Overall?
Yeah. Which, which has been my point for a while. Maybe I haven't successfully articulated that.
Right, right. Yeah, well, part of the comment that I was gonna make today, which is interesting coincidence, is that I saw this exercise not as the, uh, if you will, the focus of the committee in the coming year, which is a rather broad subject, but rather, um, what we wanted to ask the town council to focus on, giving us guidance of where we go with the next steps of how we set these priorities. Now, maybe that's, some people, uh, that's a distinction without a difference, but to me, that's a very meaningful distinction. Our focus, my focus has always been in this work, um, is to try and bring it to the attention of the council, what we saw the priorities were, and get their guidance as to what, if anything, they wanted us to do, which is part of our function. Um, there are a lot of other things that we do that are beyond, uh, the setting of these priorities. So I would make that, uh, distinction and ask that we, um, be clear in what our purpose is today as we brainstorm about the various things we're gonna bring to the attention of the council, what our purpose is.
All right. Any other comments on?
I think it's very clear. We have a, a date certain of January 22nd to present the objectives of this committee for the coming year to the town council. And so somewhat regardless of this list, but we can use this, this as a template and add on to it. We need to, I think, highlight to the town council via our illustrious chair, our, our goals. Our goals and hopes and wishes for the coming year. And I think that's the purpose. And they said it's like a 10 to 15 minutes, so you gotta be.
Five to 10.
Five to 10. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty, very focused, you know, six slides.
Is that five to 10 for everything? Is that what your understanding is?
Yeah, presentation should be five to 10 minutes in length.
Chris, I don't think you can have this discussion today if that wasn't an agenda item. So if you're going to have a discussion on, uh, the overall focus of the committee, that's different than I think you have labeled this.
I'll read back the agenda item. Discussion of EPC priorities and preparation for presentation to town council. It sounds like exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree. It's exactly what we're doing.
Okay, but not necessarily the priorities that Craig put on.
I agree, and I think that's one of the reasons we're having the meeting.
Okay.
I think if we all agreed that was the definitive list, we, we could have probably ended the discussion last time.
That's right, about which we're not in agreement.
Clearly.
It's not the definitive list, and we're here to discuss that.
Right.
So I think we're, I think we're at the same line.
I think we're in the right place. Go ahead.
Chris, how do you, how do you see this differing from the charter that we adopted last year? What, what the, what the council is asking for in the 22nd meeting?
I, well, my interpretation is that they are expecting us to show up with something like three to five priorities for the year. This is what we plan to work on. And we can couch that slightly differently, which is, these are what we think are the most important things for us to work on, but we need your buy-in, or we need some guidance, or.
Right.
Right, um, you know.
Exactly.
And I think we should spend, frankly, one of those five pages to recap last year. I think we did a big, we did a big thing when we got the evacuation plan passed. I think we ought to thank them for it and take some credit for getting it done.
Great.
And maybe even, maybe even use that as the, uh, on-ramp to, and we continue to think, you know, among the highest priorities, and I think this is true, but let's try it out. Among the highest priorities for emergency preparedness is to continue to focus on evacuation. There are, there are other issues still to be solved. And, you know, so when we give you the three to five things we're thinking, you should expect it's gonna have a bit about evacuation in there, not entirely about evacuation. And we'll, we'll know that before we have to make that statement.
I concur. And whoever's making slides sometime, I put a list of what we accomplished last year.
Yeah.
I can, I have that somewhere else. I'll send it to you. Because we, we actually got a lot done besides the evacuation plan. But I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay. But I think, I think there's nothing wrong with having the list we've been debating so far inform today's discussion probably heavily. I mean, I think there's a reason we spent so much time on it. I think there's a reason that there existed a list that had gone to the town council in the past. I think, we think evacuation is a very important thing. I think the question is, are there other, are there other things? And, and among them, maybe we should just go down the list. But there is the big question, and it's in, it's in one of these items about, about the EOC philosophy, philosophy for when does it open, who opens it? And if we, if we even need it. And we could come in with an opinion, or we could just say, we think this is really important to resolve this year, and we'd suggest we make it one of our priorities, but we're gonna need to work with you. It's not up to us. We can only give you our inputs, but maybe, you know, if we take that one on, it would be because you want to form a subcommittee to work with us to decide what does the town EOC do? When does it come into play? And who would staff it? And how can we help?
So I, I, I agree. I think that the very important, uh, uh, part of the presentation should be made. As to the rankings, I'll call them the rankings that we've been working on. Uh, it seems to me that our presentation, which can be very brief if that's what we're required to do, is what we've done with respect to the rankings and what we're asking them to do, be very clear. Uh, express, uh, that we have worked together and, and set these rankings up, knowing there are limited resources and there's a certain timetable we need to work within. And, uh, what we're coming before the town council for is to ask their guidance as to how they want us or how they want themselves proceed to the next stage, which is definitely one of these priorities or something else, but to report to them, uh, what we've accomplished. It seems to me that is, at least from my perspective, are the purpose of our presentation at the meeting with respect to the rankings. I don't know if anybody agrees or disagrees with that, but that seems to be very clearly how our subcommittee function.
I, I somewhat disagree. I think that the, the presentation is different than this. There may be some. There may be some things from this list, but this has, I don't know how many, 14, 10, 10 things. We probably have time for four or five.
Sure, that's right.
You know, and, and so, you know, I'd say, okay, the EOC is, is a, is a line item. Personally, I like widening Alpine Road as a line item. After that, we can say that there are other things that could, they could come from this list or from elsewhere. But we, I like it, we aren't going to have much time.
This is really a refinement of what was already presented to the town council and that they accept it, isn't it, Vic? You, didn't you present a version of this?
Yes.
A couple of years ago.
Did you present it, or did you email it to the networks?
I presented these, I, I have to look at my notes specifically, but as a, I think, an accurate response, I, I presented these as the items that were actionable based on the early reports and the need to set priority. And I explained that with my hope that the, not my hope, but our expectation that our committee would go forward to that next step, and we would report back to them.
So you could present it unblocked as simply a refinement and not go through all 14 of them.
I don't think there's any need to go through all 14, that's not the goal. I think what we, in fact, Craig and I have worked up some, a few slides that we're going to use, half a dozen slides or less, that are very simple and straightforward, depending on how our conversation goes today, which basically explains our process and then gives a couple of examples of some of the higher priority item. And then, as we see the purpose, turn it to them to look for their guidance as to how they want us to proceed or how they want to proceed with the, the, the next step of the process. In fact, I think it'd be done, I think it'd be done, Chris, in a relatively short period of time to explain that process and get the S for the guidance.
I, I still think, even without going into the details of this, I mean, this, this list is all about remaining details, important details. I don't, I'm not trying to minimize them, but it's all about evacuation. Right? I mean, in fact, that's where it originated.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Details that report into the evacuation plan.
Right.
Yeah, these came out of the fair.
It feels to me that if we took a vote, we would all say, and maybe we should do that, but we think continuing refining evacuation plans, responsibilities, et cetera, is one of our most important things.
Chris, I have both a concern and a suggestion for an alternative approach.
All right.
And I hope both of these will be taken in the spirit of, you know, constructive problem solving, which I'm giving. So my concern is that if we present a list like this that doesn't contain specifics of scoped work and deliverables, and really importantly, who's going to do the work? Because many of these tasks and, and areas, they span widely different kinds of things that are, span everything from large-scale, multimillion-dollar public work projects to reports that we could provide, that individuals on this committee could do. And so I think, I, I, I just, I'm concerned that, that it will set us up for problems because we don't, because of the ambiguity, because of the lack of ownership of, of this work. So the alternative, I was thinking about this since last week, I thought about it again this morning. The alternative approach that we could take, that I'd like to ask the committee to consider, is to to put some specificity in terms of deliverables and scope, timeframe, some other types of classification of these, even potential, and this could be, you know, very brief, like, you know, blockers. And then who, I think really importantly, who would be required to do the sort of scope of work that's, that's mentioned. And I think, I, I, I think it would, could be a very good thing if any list that we deliver in terms of priorities has an ownership of it designated as either an individual on this committee or as a, as a subcommittee. And it, it's critical that whoever that owner, those owners are, have, have signed up for the scope of work to that's, that's, that's put in, put down explicitly on this paper that we're delivering to our town. I mean, especially with the increased concern over wildfire safety related to the LA fires, I think, taking this seriously and, and demonstrating what, 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 what we asked for before, which is this sort of transparency and accountability, I think could set us up to do more effective impactful work this year. So I, I guess if, if other folks on the committee are interested in discussing how we might go about that, I think, I think it could be a, a really useful discussion.
Yeah, my concern with that, I think that's a good alternative to consider, is that part of the problem is that we're looking for guidance as to who should take, assuming these are efforts that are worthwhile, is who should take responsibility, not only who should, but who's capable of taking responsibility. And clearly, our committee, on a very limited number of these, if any, our committee members are not the ones to be doing that. The town staff, limited as it is, is a major component, unknown component, in terms of what they're going to be capable of doing. And part of our reason, to me, a major part of our reason going to town council is to get their guidance as to how they want us to proceed in that regard. I certainly don't want to represent our committee unless we choose to do so intentionally, is willing to take on the responsibility of these tasks. I think it's a much broader question of who's going to do it, and yes, in what timetable. I think asking them to consider the timetable or who they want us to speak to to set up the timetable is part of that next step of the process after we get there, or premature, or guidance.
And the only, the only place we differ on that is whether it's guidance or approval. There might buy in, maybe buy in instead of guidance.
I, I think that's, I agree.
Guidance, guidance is very broad, and again, it's just my history of dealing with boards of any sort, town, corporate, you outline a problem and then you give them a proposal. What we'd like is you to consider between these two options, A and B, that we think are probably the best course of action for the day. Or we've really thought about it, and there's really only one good answer. A, up or down kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, at a practical level, I mean, the, the members of this committee that have decade-plus experience in, in emergency preparedness, and they may not have any bandwidth to actually do substantive, time-consuming work on particular projects, but their advisory role, they may be interested in advocating for a particular project that could be very large and could be not under the scope of this committee, but they just may want to advocate for that, which could be spending a couple hours a month, if that. Or you could have members of the committee that are interested in doing detailed, time-consuming work, you know, for example, you know, Rob Young spent three months full-time, which he, you know, which was such a huge amount of work on the evacuation plan, and that was after two years of lead-up. I spent about a month full-time. And, you know, I've continued to do some work in the background, I shared some links about that, I've shared some of that work with, with the fire district and school district, and I'm personally interested in doing work around some projects related to big picture document processing and, and resource management and, and sharing and and, and especially using, using AI and other technical tools, and this connects to other work I'm doing with, with other nonprofit projects. And then I'm specifically interested in a certain project around communication and outreach to parents on school evacuation. And so that's an example of, of specific things that I'm personally interested in doing this year with, in connection to evacuation subcommittee, which is currently just Dale and I. And so I, I think we need to be fully aware of and understand that some members of the committee may have other obligations, other priorities, and can make very large contributions through their, through their experience, through their knowledge, through the, just through their advising and recommendation. Other members of the committee or the public, or in connection with other committees in our town government, or even in connection with the, the town council, could be engaged in substantive work projects that are time-consuming, potentially even technical. And, and so there are these different kinds of work products. I, I, you know, when you mentioned proposing problems and, or taking the framework of problems and, and proposals, I think that's a fantastic one. But I think we need to, to specify what type of proposal we're making, which again, could span from advising to serious projects. But again, I do think identifying owners and who's responsible for, for the, the priorities in the list and, and being concrete about deliverables is, will, I think, set us up for, again, both success and effectiveness as a committee.
Yeah, but my concern, I understand what you're raising, I think those are all legitimate points for sure, is I don't think it's our role to identify beyond what we want to do as a committee, if we know who's responsible for those things that are beyond scope, for example, in the town, or whether we're going to need other citizen groups to deal with some of these issues. And part of the problem we wrestle in the subcommittee is that some of these proposed goals require clearly people beyond our committee, even assuming we have some volunteers. So that's why we want to go to, it's, to me, a major purpose for which we want to go to them is to find out in light of that, how they want to proceed.
And, yeah, we do have to make some assumptions, and I, I'm, I think we ought to, in our deliberations, assume they have a lot of other big problems on their plate. Not that they don't think emergency preparedness isn't very important, but they're going to be consumed with other things, and although we have an interim town manager, we still have a town manager. And a lot of these things, as we learned, require working hand-in-hand with town staff, which usually means going through the town manager. So I, I don't know how, how much we're going to be able to ask of them. And personally, I am used to this committee actually doing as opposed to just advising. For example, right, there's, there's the concern, maybe, maybe this is small, but it'd be, it'd be a reasonable thing to want to get done. The whole mechanism and protocol for communication with the, with the town, the AM radio, right? The AM radio has been lost in limbo, we can't even get to it to change the message anymore, the fire marshal.
No, you can't.
No, you can't, not anymore. Yeah, right, because there's no process, there's no ownership. I mean, that's the kind of thing we could say we want to work on, and we will get that done. Rewriting the town emergency operation plan, we would submit that for their approval. That's something that this committee has done in the past, is something we could sign up for.
Identifying shelter place, for example, is just one classic example that we should, that's not our role.
It's not, I agree with that, and so we, we would also say, look, there are some bigger things we think are really, really important, but they're, they're out of our scope, we're going, we would need.
Yeah, I wouldn't even include that.
Yeah, well, what we included by way of example, Chris, if I may, just stay with that specific example, because I think it's the nub of, of what we're trying to decide collectively here. We, we don't have the expertise to determine shelter in place, but what we said in here, and I don't remember the exact.
They're called TRAs, temporary refug areas?
Excuse me. What we said in here was that we would facilitate working with the fire department and any other resources to have that complex, that was our goal, was to keep that, that, that project, if you will, moving forward, add what we could by our expertise, but to get the proper resources, which in my, in my, my view would be, of course, the fire, fire department being a central player and all that. So I do want to clarify that some of this anticipated clearly not are doing it.
Right.
Facilitating, and in some cases, not are not doing, another group doing it altogether.
All right, I think Jerry's been waiting for a while.
I think you need to go back to the mission of this committee, and that might even be the start of your presentation, is to, this is what you've charged us to do. Because I think that mission really talks about simply advising the council about things that need to be done to improve emergency preparedness. I may be remembering it wrong, I read it a number of years ago.
We revised it two years ago, Jerry, and we did take ownership for certain things.
That doesn't mean it was, that our mission was changed, we just did it.
We rewrote the mission statement, and it was approved by the town council.
Do, do you have that?
I got it on my computer.
It's in the link that I sent out in the Google Drive, it's, it's right here, it's the EPC Charter 2023. And there was a red line against the previous version, it was sort of processed from that. But it, it, it may be worth reviewing that to see if we want to edit it for this year, especially in light of this exercise. But again, my concern is that if, if we approve a list that doesn't have more specifics in terms of deliverables and owners, that we'll end up spending the year doing this and not creating, not create, not being set up to, to get this work done and, and have it be, you know, understood and have the cooperation that we'll need for some of the items from the town council, from the fire district, from other committees, from the towns, the town as a whole. So I, 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 I think it would be very beneficial to, to have a list in the, with, with owners in the column. I mean, that column is basically blank in this document.
I don't, I disagree, I don't think we have time to do that today. I think we have to identify the top five things, that doesn't mean we won't have other things this committee wants to do. But we need to identify the top five things with as much specificity as we can to the town council and get their buying. And, you know, in a discussion with Chris, we had, you know, I, I like specificity, but I'm not sure asking the town council in a 10-minute meeting for guidance is going to help. I think we're going to have to say, we would like to rewrite the EOP so that we can open an EOC. We are going to need some guidance from town council. And say that's one of our goals, and if they agree, then they'll hopefully assign someone to work with this on that specific item. That's, that's my viewpoint, because we're now 35 minutes into a one-hour meeting, and we have nothing on the table.
Right, but that's, that's just emblematic of, of the problem, which I love specific goals too, but we meet once a month, and it's January, which means we've met once, and here we are discussing the fact that we met once and couldn't quite get there. So I think, you know, perhaps these goals need to be more aspirational, and we will work out how to get them done and who's going to own them going forward. I don't know any other way, by the time we have the detailed plan and schedule and who owns it, it's going to be July. And then they may not agree. It seems to me a set of aspirational goals with some specificity, which I can thumbs up, thumbs down, and then we go work the details, and we probably won't get them all done. We rarely do, but we make progress on the most important ones, or the ones that we have resources for. I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I know it rubs some people the wrong way, because they like having a very specific list of goals. And, and this is, it's not just here, right, this is forever, corporate goal system is always at that same issue. Requires you to know all the things you will hit throughout the year, to say, in October, we'll do this, and, you know, and in February, you find out that color paint isn't available, and there's just nothing you can do, right? And all the goals are, are blown for the rest of the year, but you still get good things done. I don't know, I don't, I just have to deal with the question, but we, we have one comment here, what, what, I'm sorry.
Maybe. Good morning, I'd since the town council is so busy, we don't have the staff to help. I went through and made like a specific specifics for each item. Sent them to Craig, I don't know. Basically identifying who we might work with and what our specific role would be for each item on the list. And since there's nobody else to do the work, I think our committee needs to step up and do some of this work this next year, maybe the next two years. If we truly feel that evacuation is important, and we got to give a little bit more time, I'm willing to work on doing more things. But a lot of them are working with Woodside Fire or the share. Starting, and, and I don't know if they made it to the.
I think I incorporated some of them, yes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say, I did do that and submitted them, and I. but I, I feel very strongly that our committee needs to do a little bit more because there's nobody else to do any work. That's my comment.
All right, thank you. Any, any other comments? Anyone in the audience?
I, Chris, what, Chris, what do you think are the five items that you would propose?
Good question. All right. I, I would propose that it's time to rewrite the town EOP. Because I think, I thought it was important last year. We'd already begun working on it with the town manager when the town manager left is what what is the role of the town EOC? When does it open? Who staffs it? And I think it was already in need then when we had a leader in that position. And I think it's even more so now. It's just another year. It's another year out of date and um point is made, the county rewrote theirs. I think that would be one that both is important and we could accomplish. It would still require their buy-in. It would require the cooperation of the new town manager when he or she comes on board.
And, and some decisions by them.
Yep. But I think that's important. I would, I would be, I would be up for proposing that as something that we could advise on and, you know, work with the subcommittee of the town council. And actually do the writing. You've done it before. If they want it, yes. But I would propose.
That's one.
That's one. The number two, and it's a smaller one, I'd, I'd buy into Ray's proposed goal of fixing the, the communication infrastructure so that the AM radio actually has an owner or, you know, officially assigned it to us, but then give us access to it. We need to leave the room. We need to be able to maintain it and keep it up and running. There's got to be a protocol. There's got to be a way for the fire marshal to be able to change the message on there. For example. I think I would, I would propose. I would propose that. I think those are, I think the EOC one's a big one already, but um I think, I think it would, if we were to poll the residents and or to poll this team, I think we would all say evacuation continues to be an important concern. I don't know specifically what part of that to address, but we have a subcommittee dedicated to it. We have a list of fourteen priorities that we've ranked. And we would we would like to work with the town council and staff throughout the year to continue to refine the evacuation plan. We have what we think are literally fourteen points that we've already ranked. Some of which are big capital projects, some of which are smaller coordination projects. But we think, we think it's important. I mean, I could give you an example, starting with the big capital of what does it take to widen Alpine Road? It's the number one thing you could do to, our opinion, to improve evacuation from the town. That's sort of on the big end and out of our scope, but we think it's important. We'd be willing to dedicate time and resources to help if the, if the town council wants to take that on and put their own subcommittee together for it. There are, there are others on the list and I, they probably pick two or three in the scope. I would probably stop there. Instead of five, I'd say those are the three.
Did I add?
By all means, it was just a straw man, right?
I love those. I would add to the communications. As part of the EOP is how the EOC would communicate with Woodside Fire and so on. You know, we need to upgrade the radios and the protocols.
I agree. We haven't exercised any of that in years.
In years.
If I may, I, I like that idea quite a bit. I look at the EOC issues as part of the EOP. And you could actually kind of carve that out in, in the sense that, all right, so the EOP rewriting that might be a very, very big task. But, you know, maybe EOC is a little bit more trackable and something that can be done more quickly. Let me add a fourth one, if I may. Which is, and I think it's fairly straightforward and valuable for evacuation. That's figuring out and letting people know where the TRAs are. Because if they can't evacuate, what do you do? And, and that's just a suggestion.
Would you make that a separate goal or would you make that one of the examples under we think?
I would make that under the evacuation, like.
Yes, I understand Dale. It's kind of like another subset of the EOP. The EOP is huge, right?
Yeah, EOC, EOP and EOC go together.
Correct. Yeah, I got it.
It's one, one A.
Got it. Okay, so those, those are my comments.
All right.
I, I see that as part of communication, frankly.
And the AM radio.
Communication and AM radio, yep. Okay, under Jerry?
I just wanted to add that I think integration of CERT is important. Otherwise, the EOC is just sitting there chatting with the county and doesn't know what's going on and doesn't have any information and can't do anything. So I think um further integration and actual protocols as to how CERT becomes the action arm for the EOC is pretty logical in my mind.
I, I the only reason I'm doing that for theatrical effect. I was at the, I was at the board meeting last night. It was the fire marshal for the parent organization to CERT, Emergency Preparedness in Communities. And we had time at the end and I asked the question. How is CERT integrated into the Woodside EOC? And there wasn't there wasn't a strong, clear answer. It's loosely integrated. It's mentioned in their EOP. Uh, it's not something they've drilled. And there was a little bit of, I'm going to call it PTSD. We, we've tried to go down that path before and some of the members on the board that had been part of that before were like, oh, boy, here we go. Because they're two independent groups. They have different ideas. I think it's a worthy thing to do. I just think it might be really, really hard.
Yeah, I mean, this, this speaks to my thoughts looking through this list this morning are what, you know, where is sort of the current information on this? Where are the links? What's, what's available on the portola valley.net site? What's available to Woodside Fire District site? What work have we done as a committee on this? What are the documents and reports? What has the wildfire preparedness committee done? Right? How are we connected and integrated? Because I think there's information overload. I mean, imagine you're the public. Now you're, you know, you're, you're, you're seeing what's happening with LA and you're saying, what are the preparations for Portola Valley? You know, what, what website do you go to? Do you go to Woodside Fire District? Do you, you know, what do you see on our town website? The wildfire preparedness committee sends out these weekly updates, but there, there, there's not integration of the information in a form that I think is able to be effectively digested by the public. And such a big part of reducing the risk and reducing the impact of an emergency involves communication with the public, involves the preparation of authorities. And then the understanding of the public of what they do under some different circumstances. And the public is busy. You know, the public has, has lives, has jobs, have kids, have and, and so I think, you know, one area that, that I'm particularly personally interested in, and I think could be a very effective priority of the committee is information digestion and integration. And now we have amazing technical tools to do this. If you were to say, how would we do this three years ago? It is much, much harder. But now with the advances in, in, in AI, it is, it is uh so much more achievable and so much uh and can, I, I, you know, I see it as one of the biggest levers, especially that, that, that our committee can have and that individuals can have and, 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 uh, you know, combining both the wisdom of the experience of our committee, wisdom of, of other people who've worked on these issues with, with um with, with some of the detailed work can, can I think really lead to progress in in this entire area of like information aggregation, communication, public, uh, public awareness.
Do we make that a, a sub-bullet under communication?
No.
No.
My personal opinion. We need to get the infrastructure in place and then we could work on that. I am so disappointed in the public. When our fire marshal says they send out a hundred and eighty requests for to check their property and they get five responses. I know in the past counties, the town sends out postcards that they get a four percent response. They're happy. I meet people in the town all the time that are not aware that we even have, you know, an evacuation plan, even though we've publicized it every which way to Sunday. So I think it's a laudable goal. I don't think we need to put it on here this year.
Okay, well, but I think, I mean, I think this gets to a difference. I mean, look, Dale and I are on the evacuation committee. We work closely together in twenty-three. We haven't met since then. We have different views on these, on, on really important things related to governance, transparency and stuff. Yeah, I, I tremendously respect Dale's knowledge, his interest and, and when he's, when he mentions that he thinks something should be the top priority, like, like I, I mean, I, I think that's super, super important, but I having a mechanism where people who want to do serious work, whether it's our committee, whether it's other volunteers in town can, can do that work. I think, I think that's a really important component. That's why I'm advocating for sort of ownership of these items. I mean, if, if all we have time to do now is vote as a committee on what we think the priorities are, okay. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to stall out the meeting to, to you know, and but I, I, I'm just, I'm concerned about our, our effectiveness and I'm concerned about finding a way, better ways to be effective in twenty twenty-five.
Chris, by the way.
I, I'd like to, before we continue on, and thank you for walking up to a microphone because I was going to direct the next question to you. On what do you, what do you think about the goal of clarifying, formalizing the CERT integration into town governance over an emergency?
To answer that specific question, I think it's important. I think everyone historically has spent a lot of years on their individual organizations. And now I think there has been, like, just taking CERT, for example, CERT has come to a level where I think the fire district would accept and buy in to integrating that CERT, which we have. We've already taken steps. There is now CERT, we can call for Woodside CERT team through our dispatch channel whenever we need their assistance for specific things. So that's already a step in a direction to integrate CERT into our system for emergency response. So we are moving forward with that. We're still working on that integration, but that's never been there before. Communications. So let me go back. What I was coming up here for was everyone has valid points on what they're saying and a lot of things are details within the items that you need to present to the, to the town council. So for the sake of this meeting, it was come up with your four or five goals. All these other things, those are going to fall within that anyway, but that's not what the town council needs to know. They just need to know what those goals and priorities are. Because when you're meeting to discuss each of these goals here in the committee, that's when all the extra stuff of the concerns, Randy's valid points, all those things will be discussed to group them into those specific discussions. But for the sake of your preparation for your presentation to the council is here are things. I like the fact that, starting with what you chartered into what this committee's mission is. Starting with that, say what you've accomplished last year and then go into what you're looking to do this year. I think what Chris has already put out for your main objectives, it's okay if you've got more, but it's just the main ones. I mean, you can go through the year and add to your list. It's nothing. Even this list isn't set in stone, but at least it gives the town council something to chomp on. The whole goal of what they're doing is because of this interim town manager and as they're trying to move forward, they're kind of regrouping all the committees to find out what the heck is the purpose of all our committees, which this is your time to shine and show the validity of what you guys do and how important this committee is. Now going into, I just wanted to touch on as the infrastructure, because Chris, you brought up CERT. Let's also, we're finally moving forward, not just with that integration, but our communication integration because of CERT's radio system that's put in place. We finally will have communication between residents and the fire district. It's going to all be centralized through CERT's radio system, but we are going to have a unified radio communication system that when our dispatch goes, well, not that dispatch goes down, but our communication with Control One and our command channels goes down. This rate, the radio that is in place, that infrastructure is going to allow us to have communication for what residents needs and using that through CERT and to the fire department. So we're going to have that. So that infrastructure is still in place as far as protocols and procedures of how that's going to be done, but it's there. We're getting there. So we are making a lot of forward motion. So I think sticking to your four goals as the year goes, you have these discussions every month. And I think you guys are doing a lot. So don't just, there's a lot going on here, even though sometimes it seems like a lot of talking back and forth. But you need to, right now, for the sake of this, stay on task for your presentation. And then, you know, next month's meeting, now you can pull the part and figure out what you want to add to it.
All right, thank you very much. And maybe we could call the CERT team, the Woodside Portola Valley CERT.
I, I think we've got three now. Chris enumerated three. The only other one for your consideration is our wonderful safety element, which has been lagging in the town for three years. And I don't know whether we can ever get to that or not, but I think it's kind of critical. And this committee would play a big deal, a big role in the safety element. You can include it or not.
Well, the reason we didn't get to it last year was that, that even when we had a town manager, he didn't have staff to do that. It required a planning manager and there was one other and they were both unfilled.
Yeah, somehow I think by law, we're supposed to have the safety element. Like this year, isn't that right?
So what was holding up, not just staffing, because there is a large amount that the town needed to do, is the CAL FIRE maps, the LRA. There were a lot of things that the fire district was holding up with the town safety element that they originally had written that we had comments and feedback that we did not agree nor were supporting and we weren't going to approve it. So um the holdoff, so they created these fourteen points within the safety element that needed to be addressed. But the only way to address it was heavily weighing on the maps. So the state has sent out letters and notification, we should have the LRA maps. I'm gonna, they said January, I'm going January, February, because we've already been getting a lot of communication about it being released with the LA fires, dedicated personnel that were on these. We can only imagine a lot have been deployed for the fires, so there's going to be some delay. So I'm, I'm imagining maybe February, um, we'll be getting those maps and then we have been holding off with the town, working with them with the safety element because they didn't have a town manager. That's been huge. We can't continue with it. But once it starts moving, I think there's a lot of work and feedback that's going to have to come out of this committee to also review and assist because we're all going to be advising, well, not the Woodside Fire, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it. And I think it's important if even this committee or a subcommittee from the EPC kind of adds that into there is the safety element's really, really important. So we're going to need everyone's um work on it.
Chris?
I'm taking notes.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm certainly agreeing with the sentiments that have been expressed. There are two specific areas that I remain concerned about, uh, that I think we have some role in. One is the shelter in place. Not to make that decision, uh, but what we identified here as a goal was to help facilitate, meaning do what we can working on, I think it's primarily the, the fire department to identify these shelter in place areas. I just think that is an immediate issue of concern to the community. And it is an immediate and real concern in the event of an emergency or fire. We, I, I don't think we have clarity on that. And the second area is a practical matter that I think is one we keep kind of, not so much ignoring, but not fully appreciating is the management of all these daytime contractors and employees and coordinating what we're supposed to, what they need to know and what they need to do in the event of an emergency. Uh, and I think we have a substantial amount of those uh people working in our community that almost assuredly will be here in the event an emergency arises. Uh, and I think that deserves a specific identification as something that requires. So I'm not saying we, this committee does this, but I'm saying it deserves some uh guidance by the town council as to who is to address uh what we're going to do in these two situations.
Vic, I think that, I think that could fall under the, the priority I was proposing, which is uh public outreach and information aggregation. And, and Dale, I understand your frustration that the public hasn't read our evacuation plan after we worked so hard on it and often isn't, isn't responsive, but I, I take the opposite conclusion that that is, is a big problem and it's a point where we can make a lot of progress. And so that's why I'm suggesting it as a as a priority and.
I guess I, I saw them as potential sub-bullets of the when we talk about the evacuation planning, which we need to continue to refine and there's a broad spectrum of broad spectrum of points. We have a list of fourteen items that we've ranked that we think are really important, you know, start with the big capital like widening. You know, start with the big capital like widening Alpine Road, but including that, if you can't evacuate, you really think it's important to, to work with local agencies to identify the shelter in place.
Temporary refugee areas, please. That's the technical name.
Sure. Temporary refuge areas?
Yes.
PRUs?
TRAs.
DRH.
Yeah, and that, and that's to distinguish from the shelter in place policy of some facilities, uh, and all the issues around that. Because I think it's important that we understand the difference between these.
I agree, Chris. These, these fall under the evacuation, but also.
As, as does management of, we have a.
Contractors.
Right. The committee feels it's really important to consider the fact that we have a lot of employees and contractors in town.
Yeah.
That will be participating in an evacuation that, so again, we're, we're telling you, we think that that's one of the most important things for us to work on. We have a list of fourteen items under that. We can't do them all. We probably can't even do a small handful. But we want to continue to refine that. We need, we'd like a subcommittee of the town council or ta- staff to work with us to advance that.
And I don't know whether you want to put the AM radio signs under here or under the communication, because personally, I think that for your, your visitors, your contractors and so on, if they saw a sign entering town in an emergency tuned to sixteen eighty, I think that's a big deal. People would, you know, those of us who drive it all the time would ignore it. But when I'm driving on the interstate and I see those signs, I always say, oh, yeah, I better, you know, remember what that is in case, you know, they're going to close the roads, I can turn to that station. You know, maybe even we could hand them out. The fire department, I know, is handing out things to contractors. They could hand out, turn to sixteen eighty in emergency.
Chris, if I may.
Well, go ahead, Ron.
So, so I agree with virtually everything that's being said, like Dale's comments about the, uh, sixteen eighty AM. There is one other thing. I know we have tons on the plate already, but I just wanted to bring this up. And I think it, it, uh, goes back to earlier discussion. And that's at some point we're talking about, and I know this is probably out of scope, but we're talking about actually doing drills. And I think that that's way, possibly way outside our, uh, this area of responsibility and scope and so forth. But I was just thinking that, you know, we have typically a very low response rate. Uh, well, with events in Los Angeles, maybe there's a bigger appetite now, maybe. Okay, I see a lot of shaking heads. But it's just, I wanted to, I wanted to bring it up. Um, and if it's something that is out of scope, we're not going to touch, you know, so on and so forth. But I remember drills was kind of a big thing.
I think that the fire department's actually got that on their long-term goal is to, uh, move forward sometime within the coming year on these, uh, evacuation drills to the community, so.
Isn't it in May? Isn't there one in May?
Right.
In Portola Valley. Right. We should maybe add that, because this just, we'll, we'll support that.
Craig, I like that. I mean, I think, I think the drills are really important. Um, after the, the notice that was sent out, I think it was last fall, I, I suggested we, you know, move to something like monthly or quarterly until we get a certain response rate. Um, and, and really troubleshoot around what are, what are the things we can do to, to improve that? And, uh, and I, I think there is, you know, technical coordination. There's, there's, there's a lot of work that falls out that, that the fire district may not have bandwidth, but that we could even just coordinate and get other town volunteers to do. And I think there might be, you know, a lot of interest in that. And I think it's a lot of work we do could end up being that type of work where we coordinate it, we provide infrastructure and, and, and knowledge and coordinate other people putting in hours, you know, putting in the, the elbow grease.
So at this, at this point in time, how many, what, what's the status now? Three or four?
I've got, I've got four. I've got the EOP slash EOC. I've got communication. I've got evacuation planning and safety element with information aggregation, communication, possibly integrated into the others possibly next year, under the evacuation planning, temporary refuge areas and management of daytime employees and contractors.
I support that. Do we make a motion to, to support that?
I'd like to actually just get keywords in that. So, and then, then we go for it and I'll read it back and set of keywords and we go. So I've got EOP slash EOC, rewrite EOP, advisor, actually helped write what is CERT's role, communication with the Woodside Fire Protection District, and participation in drills, and staffing EOC. Yep. Okay. Anything else under that bullet? And number two is communications. And that is, number one is the AM radio, which needs protocol, needs technical, it needs ownership.
It needs, you can put signs.
AM radio signs. And then you said something about new radios.
Talking about upgrading the, uh.
This is the way to communicate with.
Well, with, with DEM.
Yep.
With Woodside Fire and with CERT.
Any other bullet points for that one? No. The next one is evacuation planning. We feel this is an important priority that we want to continue to refine. There are a broad spectrum of activities. We have a list of fourteen items that we've discussed and prioritized. And start. Uh, it's been updated, but based on, but based on previous submission. Okay, and we want to give some examples. One large capital is widened Alpine Road. Yep. Okay. We have the identified temporary.
Chris, in, in this area, I'd suggest we include the school shelter in place problem and the parent acceptance of that policy and the risk that, that poses for evacuation order.
I think that's outside our scope. I think well outside our scope.
Well, I, I, I mean, look, I think we risk, um, you know, again, I've, I've identified how big a priority I think this is and the reasons why. I know there's some disagreement about that, but it's, you know, imagine how parents are going to feel, Dale, when they, when they, uh, understand that we're, you know, not supporting, not supporting, uh, that you're not supporting, uh, work on that. It's weird. It's weird to me.
But realistically, it's like us taking on the responsibility for evacuation of the Sequoias and educating the Sequoias. I mean, we have worked, I can't tell you how many meetings we had with all the various school folks. It's their responsibility to determine what they're going to do working with the fire department. We can't dictate that. We can't even, you know, and we have to be very careful. It's because if they want to tell something to their parents, you know, I don't want to override that.
What we can do and what I've, what I've actually even personally signed up to help do is facilitate communication, do further meetings. Like, you know, I sent out this link to you. I sent, you're not.
Oh, great.
So you know, you know what the proposal, but, but Dale, you know what the proposal I made is, because I've been making it to you personally now for over a year. And there are concrete things to do, so it's, it's, and, and I think they could have really meaningful impact. So it's, it's, please don't pretend like you don't know of any concrete proposals that we could do, and it's totally outside our hands, because you do.
But that, but that's not for the, you know, that's not for us to do. That's what the town, school district to do.
It, it is, what we could do is help facilitate those, those meetings and that, and, and the digestion of that. Because again, just like parents are busy, the school district is very busy. They, they have trouble putting in, I think, the resources to do the work in terms of hosting the meetings, transcribing the meetings, doing the dissemination of that information to parents. And it, and what I've suggested is doing a couple of waves of that with a targeted group of parents and then disseminating that information and expanding it to larger and, and, and larger groups. So I think there is, there is a, something really important that could be done there. And I've personally, um, signed up to do that. And I, you know, I shared some, I shared this work with, with you and with the fire district and school district in October. I'm sharing with the committee today. And so it's, I, I think it is, it is.
I, I think we all agree it's important. I, I just don't know that we actually have any jurisdiction over it. And I think there are state laws that govern it, that they are independent. They have their, schools must have their own evacuation plans. They're not required.
No, I, I mean, I think you, I, I can follow up and, and, you know, I will, but it's, it's not a matter of jurisdiction. It's a matter of communication.
We, we could also just be silent on it in this presentation, and that doesn't mean we don't do it. It's just maybe not the one we, we don't even agree among ourselves. I'd hate to spark a debate between council members as well, but we have a, we have a comment here. Could you turn your mic on?
Uh, hi, I'm Kim Cashin. I'm a resident of fifteen years here in Portola Valley. Um, I have about twenty years' experience writing EOPs, um, working in EOCs and so forth. Um, I hear, uh, loud and clear what you're saying about the parent community. I think that to Dale's, um, comment about how the public is not engaged, I think that the school district, having two kids, rise in the school district myself, engaging with them is going to engage with the community here. And so I think that that is a large amount of parents and community that you will be able to, um, connect with and, and facilitate conversations. I've worked directly with the superintendent for the last ten years. I think that there is a lot that can be done there. I know that you're saying it's out of your jurisdiction. It's different than what, um, you guys have been accustomed to working with. But I do think that there's a real, um, valid argument in, in working with the parent community. It's a lot of people in the community that you could engage and really help get, uh, prepared for the emergency.
Well, thank you.
And there's, there's some areas where I, I don't think we can contribute meaningfully. And having been on the, the PVSD emergency preparedness meetings, gone to those meetings in school district, that, you know, they're preparing for all different kinds of emergencies, including active shooter at school. And I don't see big problems or gaps in the preparation around that. I do see around, around wildfire and evacuation is shelter in place policy. Having had, um, you know, those conversations and attended th- those meetings, it, it is a, it is a gnarly problem. Um, and, but it is one that, 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 you know, that I, that I'm convinced we can make progress on. And I think being defeatist and, 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 um, you know, blaming parents for not paying attention is completely the wrong approach. And, uh, and I think we can, we can be proactive in that and really, really make a difference. And it's, it's, it's just a major risk item for a, a, a really terrible situation where there's an evacuation order during school time. And that could lead to, you know, massive loss, loss of life.
Is the Woodside Fire in discussions or had, have discussions with the schools around this? Or is there a vacuum that, uh, uh, is, that doesn't exist?
The schools, we have had discussions on this and there is a lot of validity to what Kim is stating. The more we engage the parent community with these thoughts, ideas, plans, I think it'll also help in them trusting the system and trusting the communication. But if they don't know about it and they don't, they're not well aware, educate on it, it, it creates that disconnect. But it's not in, discussed in a vacuum. It's definitely discussed, but I think more, more conversations need to be had. Um, I have, I'm working with the Ventura County Fire Marshal. We just haven't been able to connect, to actually can, talk to each other regarding this, but, because we keep missing each other. But they had during their fire, they had school sheltering in place. And I've been, um, I wanted to get a debrief on how did that go? What were things learned? What were the problems? What were whatever? So that I can bring it back here and be able to use that as a tool of how we engage our parent community. Because the schools have that disconnect. They have the meetings that are not very well attended where it discusses their emergency protocols and including sheltering in place. And, um, like Randy says, we can't fault parents, you know, they've got things going on, they're busy. But, but back to Dale's point, as far as being an objective to present to council, I mean, you just saying that you're going to work on evacuation plans and the breakdown of that, and how does that affect our town as a whole, the school districts, you know, just an umbrella, but within the committee, you can, I'm not saying discuss how shelter in place, but maybe use time and conversation of, of coming up with ideas of with sheltering in place, what does that mean for everybody? Because that's part of the evacuation plan. Um, not TRAs, just shelter in place for places like the Sequoias, like schools. And what does that look like for them? Who's going to be coordinating? I think that information to get out there to people to know that the fire department and that entity discuss and make those decisions and what happens when that decision is made, what does the fire department do? So all that education needs to happen, but again, not for the sake of this presentation, keeping it just broad. And then as you bring up these subject matters within your committee, there are things that can be discussed later. But, um, to your point, Jerry, we do talk about it, but it still needs a lot of work.
I, I still think it's kind of out of our scope. I totally respect what Randy's speaking about, but I just think it's out of our, uh, scope. We start going down that, I don't know where we stop in terms of getting another entity's business.
The PTA handled that when my sons were in the school district. They had, they did emergency preparedness. They did presentations. They facilitated drills and, um, actually evacuated the students, um, in a, in a drill, working with the county. And they would invite members of this committee to participate as observers.
So one last note I forgot to add, I do agree though, I'm not sure if this is a task for this committee to take on. This is something that the fire department needs to work on, along with the school district, along with the parents. If further support and information or whatever, you know, maybe we'd say, hey, can a couple of members help us out? But as far as who's in charge and who needs to be front running this, needs to be between the fire department, the school district, parents. That's where that work's going to have to happen. So.
Good. No, thank, thank you for all that input. I, I can't agree more that taking, uh, taking care of our kids is, is most important. I just don't know directly what we would do, but that doesn't mean.
Chris, do you want to summarize the, I've got.
I, I'm almost there. I'm not quite.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Okay.
The next, I was still going for the kind of four examples under the evacuation planning, with the widened Alpine Road. We had, um, temporary refuge areas. We believe it's a needed area of concern and we'd like to work with. Work with Woodside Fire Protection. Clarify, what is what we want to do? Is that the right spot?
I thought I had evacuation procedures.
However, however we can help by monitoring you, we'll, we'll do that. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Still updating.
Okay. Okay, um, we have the management of daytime employees and contractors. I have my note here about including the school, school evac. And hopefully, we're not in agreement. We have a guest that said it's very important here, discussion. Uh, I'm, I'm at the moment, I'm trying to leave it off the list, not saying no, it's just not going to.
Which one was that? I'm sorry. It was the school, school, yeah.
What else do we want to mention under evac planning as an example on the four, of the fourteen items? Anything else that just pops out?
I think that's enough.
And then the next one was the safety element.
Yep.
And I would, my point would be that it was on the agenda I had with the prior town manager, held up by staffing. We, um, we are aware that the LRA maps are finally going, held up by staffing and availability is not. Um, we understand that the LRA maps are expected in the first quarter. And basically, we're just saying we're expecting to, the need to be involved. It's, it's, you know, it's our wheelhouse and.
It's a placeholder.
Right. And, um, information digestion and summary is something we think would widely benefit. I don't know that we'll get to it this year, but we're putting it also on, on our list of things to, that we think are important. Good job. What do people think of that list? Information digestion and summary, aggregation and communication. This is trying to, trying to gather or help coordinate the disparate places that all this information is available and, and help guide the public.
It's a good list.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
So Chris, this is what you would, okay.
Yeah, next step.
You're about to go there right now. Here, go ahead.
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion to approve that list.
Yes.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? You're going to vote against? Okay.
Who said no?
Randy.
I did. Not to be difficult. Not to be difficult, but I, I think...
I understand your point, I'm very clear. Next steps, there's got to be a presentation created. I would think we do it one of two ways, we could delegate it to an individual like me, or we could delegate it to the subcommittee that's been working on these priorities.
I think you should do it. I think you should do it. You can't do a hybrid.
Well, I, I don't agree, but I, I think either is, either is possible. One is, Chris, you do it, I think it's really important you be there as the chair.
Yep.
Presenting this, I think that has the greatest authority. The only question I have is whether it would be useful to have a member of the subcommittee that work with you at the presentation as a, if you will, additional resource, so it's kind of a joint presentation. I think that has a credible appearance, it's not absolutely necessary, but I'd be inclined, and I'm not suggesting that be me, by any stretch, I'm just saying somebody from...
I've learned that technique a long time ago, when someone raises an issue and says there's something needs to be done.
But, but, and anyway, regardless of who it is, I think that presents a nice, if you will, credible, broad front.
I would, I would welcome a co-pilot, and I would welcome all members of the committee to try and show up to the town council meeting.
Absolutely.
But what about actually present, filling out the presentation, getting some feedback so that I, I, I don't feel, I mean, I, I think, I think inside the rules, I could send it to everybody, and as long as you only respond directly back to me, I think that's okay. Or we could just say the subcommittee will review and approve, or you just delegate it to me, and I'll... Apparently.
Yeah, I think it's delegated to you, frankly, Chris, I really do. I think that's the efficient way to do it.
I, I can send you the charter.
Thank you.
And the goal we've accomplished for the past couple of years.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like the idea of a central point.
Okay.
And that would be you, and with input from individual members.
Okay.
I think that looks great.
And what, what do, I'm, I'm thinking about who, who should be the, the co-presenter, or at least we, we stand there together, and I think logically, I think, Craig, you headed the subcommittee, and Vic, you plowed through this, I think it could be either one or both of you, what do you guys think?
Whatever you're comfortable with, Chris, truly, I, I don't think there's a, a strong preference, the committee has some preference one way or the other.
I think, I think you should be the presenter.
No, no, clearly, Chris, I think, we're saying that.
I will, but it's good to have, it's good to have backup, and there could be a clarification.
Right.
And you guys are deeper, way deeper into it.
Right.
Than I am.
I will also be there.
You'll also be there.
All right. Well, Chris, I just want to remind you, we can't have a quorum of people talking about ideas that you're going to present, that would be a Brown Act problem, so...
Right, that's why...
But as long as we've approved him here and he's just presenting it, that's not a problem.
Right. I mean, if, if you're suggesting you can't have the full committee show up at the town council meeting, I don't think that's right. Your, your mic's off, turn your mic on.
You, you can't send it to us and to, to get input.
Right, which is why I suggested the subcommittee be the group. I, I actually do think I'm going to get clarification, I think if I send it to all of you, you only respond to me.
That's okay.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, I think so too.
But let's, let's steer clear of anything that could go, could be interpreted differently, and...
I, I think it could be interpreted as a hub and spoke violation.
What's that?
I think that could be interpreted as a hub and spoke violation if it crosses the threshold of, of significance and isn't merely a clarification, but that's been, been a very vague boundary in this town for a very long time, so...
All right, well, let's not cross any boundaries.
We don't, we don't need it.
I don't think everyone needs it, I think, I'll, I'll ask a few people if that's all right with you guys.
Yep.
That's the process. Yeah.
Just do a subset of the committee that was already working on it and go with that.
Perfect. Okay.
So, what, what's the decision here? What am I hearing? That you had presented so?
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But unless you feel you want independently, you feel you should have somebody there, I'm...
I would like a minimum of one of you to right there with me to help.
I'd be happy to be there with you.
Tough questions, I...
Yeah, I'd be happy.
Be under the table, you guys.
Either way. Okay. Okay, so we'll both be there, you tell us who you would like to be with you, okay?
Where, where in your window?
All right. Appreciate the work, everyone, this morning, it was a...
Good session.
It was a good meeting, it was a good meeting, lots of ideas, lots of debate, but I think we landed in a good place.
Just a real quick administrative thing, so I have some draft slides, I can send those to you.
Send them to me, please.
Got it, yeah.
Okay. I hear a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
No move.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. It is nine twenty, oh my gosh.
So, Chris, you need to decide to what degree you want to use any of these slides or any slides at all.
I, I will have slides for sure.
Okay.
So send me what you got, and I'll...
And Craig will share with you what...